Nobody intended on ever arresting anybody for homeless. This is here, Sam has her legislation, between the two of them, I like her legislation, we can add bits and pieces to it and come up with something. But I think I've said numerous times, there's no intention to do anything, but our rules in this committee, in this council that were passed, you have to have legislation and committee to have a meeting. So I pulled this from Herkimer so we can begin discussion.
And I think it's my duty to comment on anything that you have in discussion so you can have some framework to work from.
Thank you.
I've said all I'm going to say about this, whatever action you take, I'm not going to pose any objection to it whatsoever for the reasons that were stated to you beforehand.
Thank you.
It's up to you now, and I think it's a good thing you're discussing it as members of the city of Utica, and I think you have the district attorney here.
Yes, I just want to thank him, district attorney, thank you so much for coming.
And all of this kind of legislation. And is somebody from the county here?
No, nobody from the county is here, this is who's here now. Jack, Frank has a question.
I've just got one question. This fellow under the bridge here has come up a million times now. Am I understanding this right? We can't do anything because he's on state property? So the city really can't act on it? Is that true?
Well, there's a difference between being on city property where you're standing on a sidewalk.
I'm asking the chief, because you said you've been there a million times.
Frank, as far as criminal, there's no offense that he's committing.
And you can't take him off of state property?
So, I mean, we could if he was breaking the law, but as far as we're concerned, there's no laws being broken, it's a social services issue.
He deserves state law.
Yeah, but what about all the stuff he has there? We can allow him to leave that there? Or can we take it away because it's...
There would normally be a code issue if it was on...
That's what I'm asking.
If it was on a form of private property. We don't govern the state.
That's, so we can't touch it because it's state?
We can't govern.
The state would take it if it was deemed to be a ban.
So the state's the only one that could do that?
If he's not there.
But that's also why you have to tighten up some of our laws, and although, like say for example, use the piece of legislation I have, there might not be every single law inside this component that the police department could enforce, but after having discussions with Chief Williams, there are pieces that the police department could utilize that they would use to their advantage on being able to patrol there. But I have to sit down with him and kind of go through it on what the police department, the deputy chief, what they feel is necessary in the legislation.
Well, I thought this was kind of tricky because it was state property.
Yeah, it's not even just state property, I mean, it's a public sidewalk at that point in time. I mean, if they were a public hazard, I think like there's needles around the ground, and maybe there is, but opposing a direct threat to the public, then the police department would be able to remove him. But as far as like camping and things like that on the public sidewalks, that's what these pieces of legislation address, just kind of finding out how the city could address that without criminalizing the homeless population, whoever's there, and coming up with a way that we could help them with possibly drug, or not drug court, but...
Because he's drawing a lot of attention. He's drawing everybody's attention, and that's why it's becoming like a big problem. People are just really upset over it, and our hands are tied, and the chief's hands are tied. So it's like we're in the same situation as our whole country. Homeless is a problem, and if somebody had a solution, it would have been taken care of, but there is no solution. The whole country's in the same situation right now. We're not alone. This happens to be where this guy's bringing so much attention just because of where he is. It's a terrible place to be to represent our city, and it's too bad we can't do nothing about it, but our hands are tied.
I mean, I just throw a hypothetical out there, Frank, if Safer, he did commit an offense and we arrested him, we would have to house and store all that personal property. I don't know how we'd do it.
And that's another thing that's...
Legally, we would have to do that and keep it for up to a year.
Special equipment on to take it away, probably.
Katie, you have a question? You were next.
Yeah, I have a few comments to make.
Yep.
So it was addressed earlier that if people cared to show, they would have, and nobody did, and I...
I can't hear you.
Yeah, is my mic on?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? So it was, thank you, Tony. It was addressed earlier that nobody's here, and a comment was made that they didn't care to show, and I'm in communications with some people who were here last week, and I know we said November 13th pretty often about this committee meeting, but it is an off week, and people didn't realize it was tonight, so they thought the committee meeting would be next week. That's okay, yep, but they do care, so I'm just establishing that. And it was also said that people are upset on the council because they were addressed for being rude to our guests, and asking hard questions is not the same as defamation. Two very different things, so start taking accountability for that, taking responsibility, and just being respectful adults in this room to our colleagues and to also the guests and the people here, especially our service providers. But yeah, two very different things. My concerns with this, when the Supreme Court made this ruling, it was said in one of the writings that sleep is a biological necessity. People will have to choose then to either sleep or to be arrested. That's a massive concern, and also I think one of the things, when I first saw this come out, I didn't even think about homelessness at first, immediately. I thought, I saw it as almost an infringement on protests, and that's something that I do have a concern with. You know, people do have the right to peacefully assemble, they have the right to... So I think that you are entitled to hear from someone who you hire to give you some legal insight.
Judge.
And my legal insight is just what I've said. I think that I would not tell you not to, and I wouldn't tell you to do.
Judge.
I said, yeah, we'll see what happens.
Judge, I think I reiterated numerous times. The only reason this legislation is here was to put Sutton in committee so we can have a discussion. Nobody intended on ever arresting anybody for homeless. This is here, Sam has her legislation. Between the two of them, I like her legislation. We can add bits and pieces to it and come up with something. But I think I've said numerous times, there's no intention to do anything. But our rules in this committee, in this council that were passed, you have to have legislation and committee to have a meeting. So I pulled this from Herkimer so we can begin discussion. That's, that's.
And I think it's my duty to comment on anything that you have in discussion. So you can have some framework to work from.
Thank you.
I've, I've said, all I'm going to say about this, whatever action you take, I'm not going to pose any objection to it whatsoever for the reasons that were stated to you beforehand.
Thank you.
It's up to you now, and I think it's a good thing you're discussing it as, as members of the city of Utica. And I think you have the district attorney here.
Yes, I just want to thank him, district attorney, thank you so much for coming.
All of this kind of legislation. And is somebody from the county here?
No, nobody from the county is here, this is who's here now. Jack, Frank has, Frank has a question.
I just got one question. This fellow under the bridge here has come up a million times now. Am I understanding this right? We can't do anything because he's on state property? So the city really can't act on it? Is that true, or?
Well, there's a difference between being on city property where you're standing on a sidewalk.
I'm asking the chief, because you said you've been there a million times.
Frank, as far as, I mean, as far as criminal, there's no offense that he's committing.
And you can't take him off of state property?
So, I mean, we could if he was, if he was breaking the law. But as far as we're concerned, there's no laws being broken. It's a, it's a social services issue.
It deserves state law.
Yeah, but what about all the stuff he has there? We can allow him to leave that there? Or can we take it away because it's, it's?
That would normally be a code issue if it was on.
That's what I'm asking.
If it was on a form of private property. We don't govern the state.
That's, so we can't touch it because it's state?
We can't govern.
The state would take it if it was deemed to be abandoned.
So the state's the only one that could do that?
If he's not there.
But that's also why you have to tighten up some of our laws. And although, like, say, for example, use the piece of legislation I have. There might not be every single law inside this component that the police department could enforce. But after having discussions with Chief Williams, there are pieces that the police department could utilize that they, that they would use to their advantage on being able to patrol that. But I have to, you know, sit down with him and kind of go through it on what the, the police department, the deputy chief, what they feel is necessary in the legislation.
Well, I thought this was kind of tricky because it was state property.
Yeah, it's not even just state property. I mean, it's, it's a public sidewalk at that point in time. I mean, if they were a public hazard, I think, like, there's needles around the ground, and maybe there is. But opposing a direct threat to the public, then the police department would be able to remove him. But as far as, like, camping and things like that on the public sidewalks, that's what this, that's what these pieces of legislation address. Just kind of finding out how the city could address that without criminalizing these, a homeless population, whoever's there, and coming up with the way that we could help them with possibly drug, or, you know, not drug court, but.
Because he's drawing a lot of attention.
Certain type of court.
He's drawing everybody's attention, and that's why it's becoming like a big problem. People are just really upset over it, and our hands are tied, and the chief's hands are tied. So it's like, we're in the same situation as our whole country. Homeless is a problem, and there's, if somebody had a solution, it would have been taken care of. But there, there is no solution. The whole country's in the same situation right now. We're not alone. This happens to be where this guy's bringing so much attention just because of where he is. It's a terrible place to be to represent our city. And it's too bad we can't do nothing about it, but our hands are tied.
I just, I mean, I just throw a hypothetical out there. Frank, if Safer, he did commit an offense and we arrested him, we would have to house and store all that personal property. I don't know how we'd do it.
And that's another thing.
Legally, we would have to do that and keep it for us a year.
Special equipment on to take it away, probably.
Katie, you have a question? You were next.
Yeah, I have a few comments to make. So it was addressed earlier that if people cared to show, they would have, and nobody did. And I, yeah, is my mic on?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me? So it was, thank you, Tony. It was addressed earlier that nobody's here, and a comment was made that they didn't care to show. And I'm in communications with some people who were here last week. And I know we said November thirteenth pretty often about this committee meeting, but it is an off week, and people didn't realize it was tonight. So they thought the committee meeting would be next week. That's okay, yep, but they do care, so I'm just establishing that. And it was also said that people are, people are upset on the council because they were addressed for being rude to our guests. And asking hard questions is not the same as defamation. Two very different things, so start taking accountability for that, taking responsibility, and just being respectful adults in this room to our colleagues and to also the guests and the people here, especially our service providers. But, yeah, two very different things. My concerns with this, when the Supreme Court made this ruling. It was said in one of the writings of, that sleep is a biological necessity. People will have to choose then to either sleep or to be arrested. That's a massive concern. And also, I think, one of the things, when I first saw this come out, I didn't even think about homelessness at first, immediately. I thought, I saw it as, in almost an infringement on protests. And that's something that I do have a concern with, of, you know, you, people do have the right to peacefully assemble. They have the right to freedom of speech and protesting, and a lot of that, sometimes it looks like camping, depending how long that they go for. And that's also another reason why I don't think that criminalizing homelessness and, well, criminalizing camping specifically is even the route either. But I do see, Pastor Mike Bowman actually just came in too, so we do have one person from last week who showed up. That's what we thought. So, thank you, and I'm sure a lot of people.
And, and as long as we're going to talk from the crowd, we exchanged messages on Facebook, and one of your crew asked, I told her when it was, and you're right on that post, contact the city clerk's office. I'm glad you're here. Please come up there and stand up if you'd like to chime in. You're more than welcome. And when I was speaking that nobody showed, last time, there was no organizations. There was people from the county, and they all were invited.
So I didn't think we were here to point fingers at other people. But I guess you have to watch everything you say here because it gets taken out of context. So, if you want to talk, you're more than welcome to come up and sit at the table and ask any questions you'd like.
Joe, I also don't think anybody was rude last week. We, we asked the police department.
No, that was straight up defamation. That was different.
Katie, I'm talking.
Well, everyone's.
Would you like to be interrupted?
No, I don't.
Okay, then stop interrupting me.
I didn't know you had the floor, I had the floor, and then Joe started talking, then you started talking.
You had the floor, you had the floor all the time.
Let her finish, and then you say what you got. She does have the floor. So are you done, Katie?
Yeah.
Okay, Frank.
The police, we asked the police chief if some of these people were from out of the county. And they said yes. And the people that were homing these people said no. So a difference in opinion doesn't mean disrespect. It was just a difference of opinion. And I'm sure the police chief checks where these people are from.
I'll stand by that position that the vast majority of these individuals are not, not local.
There you go.
And that what?
Not local. Not, not local to the city of Utica.
Okay, and that's all we were saying.
Surrounding towns, villages, surrounding counties.
Well, that was a big part of the talk. That's, you know, they're coming from other areas. And, and us saying that they're not, you saying they are, isn't being rude or disrespectful.
I just want, I'll add one thing to that. As long as I was critiqued on my opening statement, I also did state that every organization that came to this meeting this week, at the meeting last week, all is doing a good job. They all are passionate at what they do. And every one of them is doing good things and doing, the thing that I'm trying to say is if we get together, we could add more. And just because your organization is questioned about something, that doesn't mean somebody's picking on you or being harsh. And I know, I'm not directing at you because we've had our, we had our talk, and I think you listened to the interview and listened to what I said. And my point of what I said, when a common council is addressed as a council, that takes it as all nine people were being rude or being disrespectful. And that, I have a, I have a problem with that. So that's just a pet peeve of mine, and I think you understand that.
I didn't say that you were.
Okay, no, okay. All right, so if you'd like to come up, you're more than welcome to come up and join the conversation. Bob, you have the floor. Joe, you're next.
Yeah, I, I, I have a question. On section nine.
I, I see there's a violation of a fine up to like $500. I, I know they should.
What, what piece of legislation?
The local article. We don't have yours.
So there's jokes.
This is mine, that at the next meeting.
I don't have yours, Joe.
Because for the fifteenth time, I put this here.
How come I don't have yours?
So anything on this, I don't really care about.
He just said, he just stated.
That this was just, you can't call a committee meeting without having legislation to discuss. So he just said that he got this local law from Rome, from Herkimer, and put it in there, but he had no intention to penalize anybody. So that's why we put in this component of the ordinance that went similar to Rome. And what Rome discussed is because there wasn't a penalty that they were trying to impose, other than what could be done under the penal code. And that's why this legislation in the ordinance last time, I said, I had a conversation with Chief Williams and the police department that we were going to sit down with the local judges, and we were going to try and finesse this piece of legislation so that it could be more appropriate towards the city of Utica than that. But I think that even going back to this, this was just something, just to start the conversation and presenting the piece of legislation to begin with, okay?
Okay, you're very good.
Does that make sense, Bob?
Yeah, it does. I just don't want to penalize them because I feel they're being penalized already.
And I, I think after the last meeting, we all agreed on that, that that's not something that we, we wanted to do, or, or, Bob.
Councilwoman Close-Motess, could we, could we get fresh copies of your proposed piece?
The city clerk's office is not open.
Okay.
So they closed. So this, Joe's, this was Joe's meeting, separate from the one that we had. So I have no problem. I, I wanted to sit down with the chief and talk with him a little more about this piece of legislation in detail, and talk with the city court judges and whoever else needed, before I made any amendments or any proposals to the ordinance that I proposed.
Yeah, it seems like there was overlap between the two, that's why.
There was, there was. And I, and that's what I said, I took the different approach, and I, I know that Joe's legislation was there, and I didn't want to take away from it, or reintroduce his law, or use his piece to have a, have a meeting on what I, what my intents were. And that's, that's really what it came down to.
The piece that you sponsored came from Rome?
It was similar to Rome, yes, yep.
And a question for our district attorney. So that was in Rome. Mr. District Attorney, are you aware of any other similar legislation in other towns or cities within the county that we're speaking about here?
I'm just familiar with what Herkimer's rendition.
Okay.
Nothing other than that at this point. Knowing that Joe's position on this was that he wasn't going to go forward without input, much research into whether or not this would stand, I assume that during the interim, you might speak with Corporation Council and try to come up with something that you do, did want to present. And then I would do some research at that point as to whether or not it's legal or not.
And I just have a couple of questions about the, just specifically the property aspect. Deputy Chief Noonan had mentioned the requirement to retain the property for a year. Is that because at that point it's considered abandoned, or is that something else that was referred to? Is that an internal policy? I just want to make sure.
It's, it's an internal policy. We follow, the state, state law references the retention of property, and this would go by. Again, I'm not sure exactly which one it is.
Okay.
But it's all property that we take it from business, that we maintain and keep for a period of time.
Okay.
And there was a Supreme Court case that just started in, I think it was like June 24th, when they did throw out property. That was why some of the language in this legislation would have had to be amended.
I see the minimum of 30 days as drafted.
Yeah, so it was, and that was another difference of whether you wanted to say destroy, destruct, you know, or dispose of. That was something in the language that also had to be cleared up, because we don't have a storage facility to do that now. A lot of the times, if they were to clean up the homeless encampment, they would dispose of it because the people abandoned that property. So that was clarification that we also had to get through this piece. Hence the reason why I have no intention of passing this anytime soon.
Yeah, and specifically with that section seven that discusses the disposition of, of property. I mean, how do, how do we feel about the, the language appearing to be stolen or evidence of a crime? How is that determined through the, through the lens of both the Utica Police Department and the district attorney's office, just in terms of?
And I don't want to speak in their, I won't speak on their behalf, but I'll just speak in the research that I was doing. A lot of the times when they do remove somebody, say they were arrested for, for a crime, they will, they will take the belongings, whether it's a birth certificate, driver's license, anything that they feel is necessary. If they do arrest them, that will go with them.
Well, separate from an arrest, just let's say.
No, and even if they were to remove them, like, say they're sleeping in bowers, or something like that, and they have to remove that, they'll ask them to leave, and whatever they leave, they'll, they'll remove that property and dispose of it.
We do that through code.
Yeah, and I mean, some of this, go ahead.
No, if we, if we give the property owner notice that there is a public health hazard on their property, and sufficient time to remedy it, then the city code and state law gives us permission to remedy that problem ourselves. So we'll try to keep things that, that we think are of value, but we can't let the public health hazard, unsanitary conditions exist forever. So as long as we've given them due notice, then we.
Yeah, and what I'm more referring to specifically is the section, I think it's section seven, the third full sentence, weapons, drug paraphernalia, items appearing to be stolen. I guess I'm asking through the lens of determining how one would decide if something appears to be stolen.
Where are you, Joe?
Section seven of the proposed piece.
Are you on?
Section seven, disposition and release of personal property.
Are you on Joe's or are you on mine?
Joe's, the one, the copy that we have.
Oh, okay, I see, I didn't research Joe's either. That mine's a little, yeah, no, I read through Joe's, but mine's a little different in the, in the component of that.
And, and I guess what I'm getting at is if you say weapons, drug paraphernalia, I mean, those are the easy ones that are picked off. You know, is this a weapon? I think that's, you know, it's more objective, but through the lens of the district attorney's office, when you see some, the language of appearing to be stolen or evidence of a crime, I mean, does that raise any red flags for you? Would you like tighter language on that? I mean, what's the position there?
Yeah, you know, constitutionally, I think it would be void for vagueness. But, you know, I guess, you, I mean, stolen items simply, stolen items is what you would write in the legislation. The way you'd get to that is through questioning the individual and determining where it came from. And many of these stops, or when they speak with people, it's pretty evident that, you know, they didn't, they didn't come through this legally. But then they would do, you know, like, like we do in a situation where you stop a vehicle with stolen, stolen property in it. You try to find the, the owners of, of that, that property. Clearly, if you have a printer and wrap in a box.
Power tools in a box.
Power tools and, and your.
Ownership denied, we, we would take that property and basically through the crime analysis center, try to determine where, if there's been reported loss of, of those items.
So, like I said, items appearing to be stolen, yeah, that language would have to be probably stricken because it's too, too vague if it said, you know, stolen items. Then you make that determination through your investigation, and that's what you, that's what you retain. Because items in and of themselves are not contraband unless you can prove that they are in fact stolen.
Do you think there's utility incorporating by reference proportions of the penal law that have these terms defined? Whether it's drug paraphernalia, weapons, or whatnot, just bringing that into the photo.
I don't think that, isn't that covered under the penal code anyways? Wouldn't it be covered under the penal code?
You want the floor?
Yeah.
Chief, chief of staff, are you, I'm sorry, Joe, are you? Wait. Everybody, are you done, Joe? Chief of staff, you have a question?
I just wanted to make a point. So even in the cleanup we did with the state DOT behind Greenman, in the softball fields over there, like, we still had to show an effort to make sure that everybody was gone.
So what we did was we monitored that site for three days, determined that no one was going to and from, you know, called a camp, a campsite. And after three days, we let the state know that there was no activity there, and then they took the action to go in and clean it up.
So that ended up being a six-digit cleanup, which is obviously a significant. There's since been, you know, more activity up in that same area, which we've reached out to the state. Senator Griffo's office has been proactive too on it. And just using that as an example to the state of like, how many of these, how much money are we going to spend if this becomes a perpetual problem? But with that, as well as sending to see if there was any, we also had, you know, social services that went up as well.
Yeah, actually, so, so the people that were monitoring, where it was our crisis response team, were, were closely with social services and handling with individuals who were, you know, unhoused. So it wasn't just, it wasn't just Joe Smith, police officer, driving by there. We made a concerted effort to, if they were coming back, to try and get some help, but they did not go back to that site.
And then even, and we've recently, you know, with the Court Street situation, you know, now as well, you know, there has been, you know, countless interaction between social services and people offering help. They're just, at this time, they're still in the process of building their relationship. You know, obviously, there's a balance between building the relationship and, you know, what happens in the meantime and the general public, that's a tough pill to swallow. But, you know, it's, it's a work in progress, just that. From an administration, you know, we've, we've contacted, we worked with, you know, everyone from Hopeless Office to our local state reps, and of course, you know, with the county as well. And, you know, it's, it's something that no stone is being left unturned, so to speak. But it is, it is certainly something that when you're talking, especially to the state, they're more comfortable with the long game than most people. And I'm not positive, but somebody was saying today that the person that's at Court Street now was the one that was at the state office building for quite some time over the summer. I'm not, I'm not sure, you might know that.
I'm not sure where he was before. I mean, I check on him about daily, and every day I, and I met him with Officer Aquilave, and I went over there. We talked with her. And I don't think he has the mental capacity, because every day he says, well, I'm going to move, because I keep telling him, look, the, the city is going to have to move you. You, you know, you can't be here. And he says, I'll be gone tomorrow, but he says that every day.
Right. And so with that, so if it, if it's true that it's the same, and I mean, we can probably confirm it. But it is interesting, I mean, he was at the state office building, you know, for quite some time. I don't think he accumulated as much stuff there because of the time of season. But it's interesting that he went from state property to state property of all the space in between, you know, so.
I don't think he has the capacity to calculate.
I believe it, but it's just kind of like.
But part of the, that's like kind of a hoarding, one thing they often see with the unhoused is they have a hoarding tendency because they've lived with neglect all their, and so they just, that's why it's so frustrating, because I've watched it grow and grow and grow and grow.
And I wish, I mean, almost if, if we could go back, I almost wish we took a council field trip to the Greenman, because that was quite the site.
Is that behind?
I did need a council field trip.
Was that behind the Utica College?
Yeah.
It's on state property.
Between the train tracks and the softball field.
Yeah, I know a lot of people that have lived there, and I think they might have gone back.
Yeah, they, they're back. The problem is, is all the heroin needles all over the ground. And that's what's scary is, and that's my biggest concern too, is the kids, God forbid a kid gets back there, and, you know, they think that they can go and play and do some silly little things, and get stuck with a needle like this.
ACR will go there if you ask them.
What's that?
ACR will go there.
No, they, then we've been there. And actually, Griffo's office has been phenomenal helping us and trying to, you know, get the appropriate people to clean it up. But the only thing that I was going to say, and I think that this.
Sam, you can have the floor.
This, this piece of legislation, it's a work in progress. And I feel comfortable when other municipalities have something to go by. I mean, we could all come up with anything, but what's working for them, that is kind of how we digest legislation and see how it could work for us. And, and that's why, I, I mean, there's a, there's a number of pieces of this that I would have to go through. And I've been in contact with Rome, been in contact with their clerk's office, been in contact with other people through, through Rome to see what's working for them. And on behalf of the, the chief of police and deputy chief, they've, they've been with the Rome chief of police to see what's been working for them. So that's something that this is going to take a little while to work on and see what we need as a municipality, and how this, this could be a multi-faceted approach to another component of our city code, which goes, which goes back to the public nuisance law that we have in the books. So that, if we can tie some of the things into this, into that public nuisance law, and possibly address. Another thing that I did with this is, there's, there will be a rescinded component to this, and that goes into the loitering component, public spaces, because it updates it and kind of puts it in one unified code so that everything's there. And, and a lot of the things, and too, I will say in this is because, kind of what Judge Guerin will touch base on is, we didn't have this, this, this opportunity to, to put some of these things in place because that was deemed decriminalized through the state code with, with the right to begging. And I, I think that it goes into, we're trying to put so many components in one, that's why these conversations take a little longer than necessary, because we're trying to put in the aggressive begging component, we're trying to put in the homeless component, we're trying to put in the campsite component, and it's not just as easy as a piece of legislation being passed overnight. And even with the codes department too, I think that's something we were talking about last week with the public nuisance and how we can work with that. I mean, these are all things that I think are going to take, you know, several more meetings to kind of figure out what approach that we want to take. And if anybody has any questions that they have, or want to make any amendments, or see any other pieces of legislation, they're more than welcome to do that. And, and that's kind of how, like I said, I was going to do. There is also grants and stuff that I think that the city could go after, that I did send to the police department that we can kind of look into a little bit more to see if there's resources out there that could help us through that. That I did send to the police department that we can kind of look into a little bit more to see if there's resources out there that could help us through that. And then kind of take it from there. So that's the approach that I had with, with this piece that I proposed. And I know, Joe, I, I talk to you all the time and I know that you have no problem either combining these pieces.
No, that's what, act, actually, that's what I thought we were doing today. So, Jack, I know you want the floor, I'm going to give it to you. I just want one question for the, I have a question actually for Chief Noonan and Deputy Chief Noonan and District Attorney. So the first one will be for Deputy Chief Noonan. So again, on the radio this morning, this lady, she spoke how the state can't move somebody that's there. But she stated if people in a car pulled over and slept under the bridge, you can remove them, you know, and I mean, it made no sense to me. Okay, so you don't, you're not aware of that. And then.
Well, I mean, I, Todd, what, what if, what if they commit any crimes?
Right. If they had a car and they weren't homeless, that they could, if they were under a bridge, we can, you, they could be removed. Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm only asking you why.
So it's state property, if they reached out to us and said, we don't want these individuals on this property, when they call us, they will be the complainant. And possibly trespassing, I mean, I.
Is she saying because of the car?
I have, I have no idea. I mean, if you listen, go back and listen.
Well, she's saying, what the state has always told us with these situations is that they, they treat unhoused people staying on their property that differently than they treat general trespassing. And so if they were there with a car under the bridge and they were deemed to be general trespassing, they would move them along or have the police move them along. If they're deemed to be unhoused people, they have a whole policy for state property that's put out by OGS that every state agency follows in order to deal with that. So there are two separate categories to that. There's people that are trespassing generally and there's people that are unhoused.
Okay, all right. And then, Todd, the, the last thing I'm going to ask you, and you may not know this either. So we were just talking about, and again, this legislation was to get on here so we can have a meeting and make legislation. But for example, I'm listening to you, like you're saying, number seven would have to be, like what Joe brought up, have to be amended, okay? How did, is it just lack of law that, that, I mean, this legislation was passed in Herkimer? So they, they just passed it? I mean, or they didn't go through and weren't thorough enough? Or I, I don't want to put you on the spot to say that, but I'm kind of, kind of curious on all of that. And, and my other question on this, have you, do you talk to the, the Herkimer DA? And do you have any feedback on how this type thing, what good in this worked and what didn't work?
I, I have not spoken to the, the Herkimer County DA on this legislative.
Cause I'm just, I'm only asking so we could take, if there is something good on this, we can add it to the other part and.
Well, the reality is it's very new and it probably hasn't been challenged. I don't even know if it's been enforced at this point. So, you know, you're not going to know issues with it until a court rules on legality of what you're dealing with. You could pass anything, like, until that challenge comes up, so.
But it seems, you guys made a great point on Southern and all of that. It seems, it seems to me that they just passed this and didn't even think about it.
You could pass any law that you want.
No, I, I understand that, but they must have lawyers there.
But what they're saying is that until somebody challenges that, then that law doesn't become effective or not effective.
Right, I understand that.
So they could enforce that law in Herkimer?
Right.
And somebody could, they could say, we're removing this person. And they could remove that person with the property and they could abide by the law that's on the books. It wouldn't take until they remove somebody and somebody challenges that in court, that that would be the reason that that law would no longer be effective.
I, I understand all that.
But no, you're not understanding.
I do understand it. I'm just saying that obviously, I've, number one, I have the floor, I do understand. I'm obviously saying that we have two, we have two lawyers here, right off the bat, read it in two minutes and brought up a good point. You're going to tell me in Herkimer, they didn't have lawyers to see that?
What they're saying is that they don't care to put that law on the books.
Okay.
And they're not going to change the law until somebody challenges them.
I'm not asking.
You could put a Ferris wheel in the middle of Genesee Street because you're able to as a, as a legislative body. And you could keep that Ferris wheel in the, in the middle of Genesee Street until somebody brings a lawsuit to a court and the court determines that that Ferris wheel on Genesee Street is no longer feasible.
And Judge got it.
Yeah, you got, didn't you want the floor next? Okay.
I have only interceding because I wanted to tell District Attorney, Mr. Carver. It's a leading case on removing a person from public property. And was a, is the subject of a Syracuse University Law School seminar. That was, it, I was interviewed by the Syracuse University student who I write the paper on. The leading case is People versus Pembry. The Chief of Police has a copy of that case. The case involved the person who kept going repeatedly to the state office, to the county office building and causing problems with social services. I found him guilty of, got what it was, harassment or assault attack, I can't remember. But that was appealed and the decision was that you can remove someone from proper, property when they are doing something that has some effect on the people who work for the government or who use the building. And it was an extensive decision. I, I don't recall it. I gave it to the Chief of Police and said, you do have an authority because that was the county sheriff. Now, they mentioned something about the street. The street is public property, but some of them are state property. Every time you do something that affects the rights of a person, you better have a good foundation for doing it. And there are only one other thing in this legislation that bothers me a little bit and should probably bother the District Attorney. And that's nine, which calls for the fine and or end or imprisonment. Now, that criminalizes the law. And I've seen all the laws read about and all these, you're right, all these governments are doing the same thing. And I, I don't think New York State is unique. I think this is happening all over the place. And I, I think that greater legal minds than the, the one who represents you here will make that decision. I, I think they're going to have to because the population grows and festers and, and it's much difficult in the city, more difficult in the city like in New York City than it is like here. And of course, sometimes, like the stores who've allowed stealing in their presence, they do so to avoid violence and further harm. And so you're between the rock and the hard place there. So I think you're doing the right thing. I think whenever you have a piece of legislation like this, actually, I think it should go by section by section and see what you agree on. At least the majority does. And then I think you have to make a decision ultimately. And I don't care about what other governments did, about whether you want to criminalize the law. And I, quite frankly, I didn't write this statute. I'm not going to criticize it. That's why I don't comment that guy. If I was the author, I would have ideas. I was not the author. So therefore, I think these are the things that you're going to have to take into consideration. Then I just see, then hand in a different law, I'm sure that would go for Betty, that would be part of your discussion.
That was, that was the one that's already in.
All right, anyway, anyway, I want you, that's People versus Pembry. It's still good law and it's still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack, you got the floor? Well, thank you. First of all, I don't think I have to tell anybody, but we know this is only a Band-Aid. Uh, we're going to have this until we find a place where to actually put these homeless people. But, you know, and, and Joe, I'm looking at this and, and I'm, I'm a man of common sense. And I think this was written in common sense language so I could understand it. Um, I, I think it's fine until, you know, you, you get up to where everybody is saying, seven and nine, section seven and nine. And I, I, I think if you could work through the seven and nine to make sure it's fair, you know, I, I, I don't know, you know, you know, you get down to nine. You know, seven, we can work out. I mean, I think that's pretty easy to work out, you know, what are you going to do with weapons, what are you going to do with this? I mean, I think that, I think we could have the Corporation Council take a look at this and, and try to put that into, into. The, the problem is, is that, do we want to put home, make homeless people the, you know, do we want to make them victims or do we want to make them criminals? So, you know, that's what you have to decide. I don't think they're criminals. And so I'd, I'd have to sway on the, on the victim's side, but you, you have to do something with them. And I think the bottom line is, if, if you could fix nine and make it palatable for, you know, for, for both sides here, I think that, you know, this, this, this. I think this has legs. You've just got to figure out those, those two areas there. Cause nobody wants, listen, no, nobody wants homeless people to be living, to be living in the parks, all right? That's, they're, they're not for, they're not for the homeless people. They're for, they're, they're for everybody, all right? They don't want, you know, the, when, when people go home, they don't camp in the parks, all right? They don't have a place to go, I understand that. But they supposed to be, they supposed to serve as an area for enjoyment, for recreation, and then you go home. Well, the, these people are using it, and once again, I'll, I'll state that this is a Band-Aid because we do have to find a place for them. But the, our public parks and our public areas is not a place where these people should be staying. So we do, so I don't have a problem with this and, and something in this sort here. As, as long as we clear up, you know, what we're going to do with them and how we, and how we're, and, and how we're going to treat them, once, you know, once we do take them. And I'm not going to say into custody because I understand what that means. But where, where can we put them? So, you know, it's, it's, it's the beginning, but there's no end to it. You know, we got no place to put them. So until you find a place to put them, they're going to be going from one park into another park. And these poor guys, they, they, the police and everyone else, they're just going to be chasing them all around. So I don't know if, 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 you know, I, I don't think you could build a better mousetrap right now because you, all you got to do is release them after you catch them, you know? Uh, so I think, you know, we, you got to figure out, it's got to be a big, it's got to be a bigger thing. So I mean, you know, in the meantime, i- i- if you want something to get them out of the parks until we can figure out, but they're just going to go to another park. But if you could figure it out, uh, you know, I, it, I, I think this is like more of a county thing. I think if it's more of a state thing, I think it's more of a federal thing. And I think unfortunately, it, it, you know, what floats downhill and I think we're getting caught with it. And, you know, we could, we could write what we want, but, but in the end, I, I, unfortunately, I think that, that all we're doing is just moving checkers around on a board. So, thank you. Thank, thank you. And that's, that was the purpose of having that, to take stuff. Joe, Councilman?
All right, thanks. Yeah, just a, a quick comment and follow-up to Councilman Beatrice and Councilmember Close Motestas' comments regarding the section seven. You know, I think, I think the point is that this is where we do the due diligence with the language to prevent a successful constitutional challenge once a law is in effect. Because Councilmember Close Motestas said, I mean, you could, you could make it illegal to eat a sandwich downtown on Tuesday, but until it goes in front of a court and is interpreted, you know, that's what's on the books. But again, I think the point is, is responsible legislators to be here making sure to limit the county or the city's potential exposure to a constitutional claim down the line. I think these conversations are important for, for that purpose. And to speak about language and, and keeping things concise, it really is to just make sure, uh, to the best of our ability that if there is a challenge down the line, we know that what we pass is constitutional, legal, and there wouldn't be a successful claim down the line with anything. So just a comment there.
And that's my, and that was my point, what I was trying to say. But next is Chief.
But you never know if there's going to be a challenge until you know.
Mr. Gentile?
Well, go ahead.
So, so just with regards to the parks, we, we do, there is an ordinance that's in place that we do enforce.
After nine o'clock, right?
After nine o'clock, um, that, that's effective and it's been, it's been tried and tested and, and we continue to do that. We do run into some issues if individuals are, you know, deep in the woods in the parks and we can't see them. But our officers are enforcing the city ordinance with regards to being in the park after dark. And I do think where this came from, and my understanding is that in Herkimer, they didn't have such an ordinance and they had a problem, one of their parks there, people camping. So this is the solution as opposed to an ordinance of not being in the park after dark. That's kind of where this came from, kind of, and.
Okay.
The only other concern I have with this one, and I think it'd be, it'd be effective for public areas, the private property portion might be concerning because we still believe you do need a complainant for that, even if it is adjacent to public property. So there is a section here that references private park property adjacent to public property. My opinion would be, we still need a complainant to, to enforce that. If someone's in, in a, in a, in a way that's private property that's adjacent to public property, we would still want a complainant saying this person can't be there.
I agree with you. You're right.
That's, it's all.
Chief of Staff?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna point out, like on the section nine, that's why we've started looking into the idea of like some sort of community court that's similar to like drug court that, you know, will allow to, you know, connect the services or create some benchmark that's not a fine. Cause obviously that's going to be almost impossible to say, you know.
Right. Yeah, but my answer on that, like you did, we're already offering them these. Every day, these people are being offered these.
They're not mandated. They don't have to.
You can mandate them, you can mandate them, but then they got to go. What are you going to do?
Wait, Mike Scott.
You can mandate them, then they don't show?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, it's certainly not a perfect solution. But, but there are models where it's working in other places and, and it's also gives us another tool in the toolbox. And maybe, you know, listen, if you go to drug court, there were plenty of people at drug court that we just watched graduate last week that people would have said the same thing. We've given everything, we've given every services and they've never done anything with it. And now, you know, they've successfully graduated drug court and they're onto a whole different lifestyle.
And doing something is better than nothing.
Right. So, I mean, that's that. And then obviously agreed with the, the point that, you know, there, we have to move in the direction of having more, you know, places to go. And obviously, we're, we're playing catch up on that, but, you know, there are some really solid conversations and organizations that are, you know, coming to the table on that, so hopefully.
Chief, Chief of Staff?
Yeah, so I mean, we're, I mean, we are working with the state on, you know, opening up the state land where the, where the villas are on that. There's some organizations that are interested in partnering with, with those facilities. Um, there's places like, or people like Pastor Bowman that are, are working on some solutions. There's, um, the Salvation Army is another one that would like to come back into the Utica area for stuff and they have access to beds as well.
Can we, can we agree, that'll be trouble, even Pastor Bowman and Gentile and whoever else, that's something that us as a municipality can't do? Can we all agree that that's where the state actually has to come in?
Oh, absolutely.
And help, where you want to be, if you want to come from a warming center to a shelter or somebody wants to help out in that component, that's a state problem and that's where I think that maybe even Griffo or Funkchon down the line can sit down with us as well and say, hey, what's working for us, what do we need to do? Do we need to send legislation to the, to the state and say, listen, guys, you know, we're trying to do, solve this problem the best we can as a municipality, but the state has to come in and they have to be able to help us.
Right. And, and so even, and even recently, we've had conversations with HUD as well. So at the, at the federal level. And they're really looking for, you know, a partnership beyond the city of Utica that's going to be able to give that service.
Did they ever talk about maybe increasing HUD funding towards us, maybe to like the.
Yeah, there's potential to that, absolutely. You know, there's, so there's, like I said, there, there's HUD, there, there is some state funding and some state conversation. The state is really taking inventory of all of their state property. So maybe we can buy the little section under, of Court Street so then we can, we can have jurisdiction.
Well, I think we want to buy it.
Rent it, lease it for a day.
Okay, we'll take it for a day. But I'm just, but, but yeah, so a lot, a lot of those conversations are happening and unfortunately, it's not, it's not as fast as we'd like to see it, but certainly is working in the right direction.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Pastor Bowman?
Um, thank you for letting me sit down with this esteemed organization. Um, I just was here because I just really want to work with you. What did you say? Where, yeah. Um, because we have a long history as an organization. I mean, our church has been in Utica since nineteen oh five. And, uh, we just really wanna work with the city. So we're here, um, I know last time got a little combative and, um, and I actually didn't, even when the radio asked me, was I feeling badly about the thing? I said, no, I just thought it was a good chance to, to, um, to, you know, uh, address misinformation. So that was all my, my issue. So I, you know, they asked me to do that. So, really, I just wanna work with you. I'm offering myself and this, and our organization. And I think we've, we've studied it a lot. We've worked with Gwen, uh, the professor from Harvard and, um, City College of New York, um, and her plan. And we've been working with Hamilton and Colgate and SUNY Poly and Utica University. And we're putting all that together. So, I just come to say, I don't wanna fight with any of you. Um, I want, I'm here and I'm, I'm offering our organization as as much help as we can be. And, um, I wanna help and we're here. And I think we've proven that even without funding, we sacrifice everything and do all that we can to help the city, um, and to help. And I appreciate it, uh, you know, some of you volunteered there. And, um, this is a complex issue that I appreciate you guys taking the time to really work through. And it's encouraging to see that. And so, um, so, uh, to your point, we got a grant from New York State that the county, county DSS put us up for because they always liked the work that we did. And they thought that we did a good job and that we understand and we were fill, filling a gap. So they put us up for, and they wrote a recommendation for us to receive, um, what's called step funding. So we received a three-year, million-dollar grant from Step. And so, um, it's for salaries only, so we're working with, uh, the city, um, on maybe getting help to do, you know, some of the other things that you need with that. So, we definitely, so.
What are you gonna use it for? For a million dollars?
Uh, it's for salaries for, so what we wanna do is, much like Gwen's.
It's a lot of money, so I'm interested in hearing what you're gonna have to do.
Yeah, so much like what Gwen, um, was, um, was saying that we should be doing is, we just don't, um, I think shelters, a lot, a lot of the reasons why people say they don't wanna go to shelters is because shelters just kinda house them and there's not a lot that happens there. So what we're, we're adding the navigation center component to it, which is saying like every person in the morning, rather than just saying, alright, you gotta go. Every person will get a case management, um, thing and, uh, a case management meeting and say, this is, these are, this is what you need, this is where you need to go. Like, say you don't have your, you don't have your, um, um, your, your documents. This is how you're gonna go get your documents. One of our people will take you to go get your documents. You need to, uh, um, to find apartments. We'll get you, we'll take you to go do that. We'll take you to look for your apartments. Cause one of the things that I've seen, as I've been taking people, and I've had a really good relationship with DSS, when I'll take someone to DSS and they'll have like mental health issues, and I'll give them like, um, a, a list of apartments. But they're kind of overwhelmed and they don't know what to do with that.
Okay, can I just?
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah.
Do, do you have enough case managers?
Yes, yes, we will have them.
Cause, I mean, is, is that something that we should be pushing at, uh,
Well, I think.
Community colleges that we should?
Yes, so here, what I think, um, and you guys all can jump into is, I think one of the biggest issues in this is, is supportive things. So like, one thing that I always find when I take someone to DSS, like I was saying, is, they gave them a list of, of, like, I'm working with two veterans. And, you know, I, I'm in the armed services as well, and I hate to see veterans sleeping outside. And I have a veteran that's a twenty-year veteran and his girlfriend is, she's about a ten-year veteran. And they're just out there. And part of it is, they've been kicked out of the Veterans Outreach Center for legitimate reasons. They tore the apartment up. And I looked at the pictures and I'm like, I understand why they're not there. So I'm not casting aspersions at anyone who kicks people out because I see what happens. But the issue is, is that they, if we're gonna put, if we give them like, hey, we'll give you an apartment, they're gonna get kicked out of the other apartment in, within a couple of weeks. And so they need, um, what they need is, uh, case managers that will liaise with the landlords and be the one who the landlord talks to, and then checks in on them every day and helps them to keep the rules. Because last time, they got thrown out of an apartment. And they have plenty, he gets plenty of veterans funding, but the problem is, he bought, he just picked up a pit bull and then the pit bull ate the neighbor's cat. And like, stuff like that happens because when you have mental health issues, um, you know, I'm saying like, so I know like, so when the DSS person says, hey, find them an apartment, I'm like, they're not gonna last, they're not gonna last very long because of the mental health issues.
Who are you?
Um, so they're living on the street, they're living in a garage right now. And so, um, because they've been kicked out of everywhere. So the issue is.
They have plenty of money to get an apartment.
Yeah, but the.
They were, they're heads together.
And, uh, well, and the, his, his provider only gives them a, a small amount a day, which is not enough for a hotel because, because of the mental health, they can't give them the lump sum at once because, so. But if I went to an apartment and I called his, cause I've talked to his case manager on the phone, they'd pay the rent right then, but they don't wanna pay a lump sum to them when they're on the street because there's mental health issues. So, all I have to say is, is that the, one of the biggest solutions is housing, as you said. We need to get them in housing. But if it's not, um, if it's not supervised and monitored and, um, supported, we're, they're gonna be just out on the street again.
Let me just ask you a question here.
Yeah.
Isn't one of the biggest problems with all this, the drug addictions? There's plenty of houses and places they can go, but they have to follow the rules.
Well, see, like, these two aren't, aren't drug addicted. It's mental health.
Okay, but for the most part, it's the drug problem?
No, I would say actually data shows that there's not a bigger, uh, uh, drug use in the homeless population or in the unhoused population as in the regular population. But because we kind of, because the ones who are the worst in the, um, that do have drug addictions and are the most behavioral, they tend to get kicked out of everywhere. And so those are the, it is a majority of the visibly homeless we see because of, I mean, I don't know the correct statistical term about it, but we're, that's kinda, those are the, that's like the eighteen percent that are out there.
But.
When, when you say the other, then the other ones are, has mental health?
Yes, mental health.
It's either or.
Or trauma.
For the most part.
Like I said, like, most, um, every woman that we've ever helped, and I'm not being, I'm not exaggerating at all, has been sexually assaulted sometime in their life. And even people that we think are not homeless, cause the homeless numbers are hard to keep track of point in time, any of the providers will tell you that, is because like people stay with someone for a couple nights and then they'll be off. And then some of the women especially, in the winter, they'll stay somewhere, but the person may be charging them like twenty-five bucks a night, or they might take, they might be sexually assaulted by staying with someone. And so it's really dangerous for them. Um, and so it's a really complex problem. So you're right. The drugs are really, really, probably you see it more in the, in the visibly homeless, but that's a small percentage of the overall homeless. But it is a ma, a bigger percentage, you're right.
Well, cause the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking. The, the reason I'm asking is all we talk about is needles. So obviously, there's gotta be a drug problem.
With some, yes. But not a, not, not the entire person.
Most of the cleanups around here, I mean, they're cleaning up drugs and needles, Little League fields.
With the visible homeless, yes. But, one other thing though, that the data will show you is, is that they're not, they don't become homeless mo, because they're drug users. Often, they become drug users when they're homeless because of living on the streets and the pressures and the things like that.
Yeah, but, but, they're, they're using drugs like man. Right. And, and no matter what housing.
No, no, but so I'm saying is though, but, um, but when you house them, so like what Bev's, or Bev's, um, Gwen's, um, report showed that when you house them and then you give them wraparound support services, they're more likely to be, to become clean than if we like send them, cause we see this a lot. We'll send them to rehab, and then they'll get, and when they get done with rehab, they still have no place. They go back out of the street and the recidivism rate is just through the roof.
Right. District Attorney?
So if there's four hundred homeless people in the city.
Yeah.
And thirty of them have a drug problem, and they're using heroin four times a day together in one spot. That's.
Okay.
A hundred and twenty meals per day in one spot there being discarded. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's, there's a drug problem. There's also a mental health problem.
Is there an issue with the city putting garbage can in there?
Garbage cans are all over.
We often, we have sharp containers all over.
He's got one right in front of his building.
We have a sharp container, it doesn't help.
They're not using them.
They don't.
And every time where we have to go and we get cleaned up.
They're all over.
There's needles.
Yeah. Yeah, so like, even a safe, a, a safe injection site, I know that's kinda controversial, but a safe injection site could, you know, could, could, other cities are doing that. I know we're not ready for that, that, as a community. Um, but that, that does take down, but actually though, but housing them is really what gets them off the street.
But even when, if you had housing, let's say the state opened up.
Yes.
Did everything they can do, okay?
Yeah.
They're not gonna let them sit there and use drugs.
But they'll mo, they'll, they'll have a better chance of getting clean, and the data shows that. I'm not making that up, it's just the data. The data will show that they have a much better chance if they're housed to get clean, if, with wraparound services.
Right. I believe all this happened when they, this all started, when they closed the, the site centers. Lot of those people, when their medicine is monitored every day, they had a place to go.
Right.
They were able to live a normal life. They got on their own, they feel good, they stopped taking their meds and they go.
Drugs are self-medicated.
Right, right.
Right.
District Attorney, I know you've been waiting for this.
Yeah, I apologize, I have another meeting to get to, but I just wanna say.
Thank you so much for coming.
The, making this criminal is a last resort. It's the last thing you want. I think we've all talked about, they talked about it being a Band-Aid. With that being said, I, I think, uh, like, yeah, some great points. And my, my, it's kinda the point I made last time we met is, first, you have to identify the issue, the problem. You know, anecdotally, you have two or three people you can talk about. But we need to identify it from the city's perspective. It's a city problem. You need to identify how many we have, and you need to find out why each person is in this situation, and then have services that attend to those needs. And yes, of course, housing should be part of the solution, but you have to also address whatever underlying issue is that caused them to be homeless to begin with.
Absolutely.
If it's, you know, if, if it's PTSD, then, you know, we have veteran services that, you know, that you can deal with. If it's drugs, if it's, but it should be a comprehensive plan. It should be, you know, similar to codes violations as opposed to criminal to that, that gets you the conversation or gets them to a community court. But I, I agree with you, it's almost like we need to, and I don't wanna grow government, however, um, it's, it's, it sounds like what you would want is a, an organization or a group of almost probation officers for civil, civilly unhoused people. Um, and, and they are basically their caseworker that, that gets them through the process. If you truly want to eradicate the issue, you need to find out if it's, if it's constant influx. If, you know, if it's just the people that are here and that's just them moving from place to place. Or, so where are people coming from that, you know, if we, if we clean up the problem and we take four hundred people off the street, are there gonna be another four hundred that take their clothes?
Right.
Those are issues you need to identify. And again, I think making that something criminal should be a last resort when it comes to homeless.
Right. Point in time count is huge. And we haven't, they only, HUD only does it once. So the continuum of care, once a year, does, they go out and they send everyone out, and they do a point in time, we call it a pit count, a point in time count. And I've been advocating for all of the organizations together to work, to have a central place, a database, where we have a, a much more accurate point in time count because we're, we're grossly under with our pit counts that we do once a year.
I mean, just without disrespect, what you're talking about, it's like when you do flood prevention. You don't think about, well, what are we gonna do in response to the flood? That's only part of your plan. Part of it is, what are you gonna do to prevent and mitigate the flood in the first place? And when we did a study, two years ago, they told us where they're coming from. They, they were here all summer and they looked and they told us.
For services and the services.
Right, so they're.
Don't work out, and then they stay.
Right, so they're, they're. But even if they don't work out.
They're not, they're not from Utica, it's unhomeless.
No, they're program releases.
Cause it's a service center, the county's a service center for the, for the county, for the area. And for outlining counties. Come here, whether it's for drug rehab, mental health treatment, whatever it might be, and that doesn't pan out, then they stay here. And the last address they have is Utica, so everyone says the Utica residents, it's not accurate.
But they, they, we did a study.
I, I know, I.
We did a study. It says on the study, it's a program releases or voluntary withdrawals. So there are people that are coming to impatient rehabs here.
Yes.
There are patient, there are people that are, are being released from prison to the county, and the only homeless shelter in the county is in Utica. And there are people that are programmed, so they consider jail and prison a program, right? There are people that are program releases that either voluntarily or involuntarily are released. So we know what the problem is. We know where they're from. We know that it's gonna keep replenishing as long as these programs continue to release them. So, part of homeless prevention, one of them's rapid rehousing, is like, if you're homeless for less than, for more than thirty days, you're more likely to be chronically homeless. So one of them is, when people do lose their apartments, you can't let them culture for two years. Cause it's gonna be hard for them to find an apartment, right?
And that's never counted.
Right, right. And so, so it's the rapid rehousing. But the, the second element is, what are we gonna do to people when they are discharged from the hospital, when they're discharged from prison, when they're discharged from county? Like, how, I, I, I mean, when they're discharged from rehab, how do we put them into the system before they get into the streets? And that's, that's the problem.
I can tell you parole that right now. If, 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 if you create your crime, let's say you're in New York. You're, you're supposed to go to Harvard.
But if you don't have a last known address in New York.
If you don't have a last known address.
They put you in rescue mission.
And we used to be, parole, back when I was a parole officer, we were, we were tougher. If, if you, if you were from out of town and you wanted to come to Utica, you're not coming to Utica because you committed the, the dumb, you committed the crime downstate and you gotta go. Even if you had family up here, we didn't want, we didn't want you to come here because we know all we're doing is, we're, we're, we're collecting, we're just collecting all their garbage.
But Jack, the release team has to have an address. And their address is gonna be the shelter if they don't have a house.
Well, that's what I mean, so then we get stuck.
Right, and then they don't wanna stay in the shelter, just somebody that they just got in an argument with jail and is in the shelter, like, you know what I mean? Like, so Utica gets everyone.
Right, whatever their birth certificate says.
Right, it's not even the birth certificate, no.
What's in the?
No, it's in the county though, so, so like, if I committed a crime.
Whatever driver's license.
If I committed a crime in Boonville and they said I gotta go back to Boonville, right? I committed a crime in Boonville, I gotta go back to Boonville. I'm in county jail for sixty days. They say you gotta be released to Boonville, but you need to be released to an address. I don't have an address in Boonville.
And where's their mental, where's their mental health and drug program at?
But it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Marcus, I will drive you up to Boonville.
It doesn't matter, so what they do, so, no, but it's important that everybody knows how it works. Because, cause a lot of people don't know how it works. So if I say that, if you say, oh, well, you gotta be released in the town where you committed the crime, only if you have an address there. They have to give you an address. So then they give you an address of rescue mission, and when the police do the.
No, no, you're wrong there. If they're in a town, let's say they're in, uh, Norwich, and they created, they, they created. Norwich has motels there where we used to settle. There's motels in every, there's, there's motels in every county and every town around.
It's not, it's not happening.
Let me ask.
But they need to. It's not by that law.
Let me.
That's all he's doing. I don't want anybody coming back to you.
I think they're gonna end up here anyway, though, that's the problem.
So let, let me ask one question. Why, since, it seems to me, since two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty in that time, why has this, this homeless has been around forever? Why has it got so bad in the last three or four years? Is there, am, am I, am I correct in saying that it's got very bad?
The data, the data will tell you that COVID really was a big accelerant of it. And I would think, um, like, income inequality is a huge part of it because in many places in the country, housing is so expensive that people can't afford it. And so when you put up, when you put things like that with COVID, and then after COVID, a lot of landlords lost their shirts and they are much tougher now, which understandably, and no complaints about, you know, landlords have to make their money. Um, but it's, all of that has created, I think, this perfect storm of what we're dealing with. Um, and so, it's everywhere.
But that's, that's part of the study too, so, so.
I, I understand.
But that's part of the study too. So part of the problem is specifically to New York State and our area. He's right, landlords are tougher now, right? Like, try housing a sex offender, you can't do it, right? So you see people on the street, you're like, why don't we get them a house? Well, who's gonna put them in?
We have plenty of sex offenders.
No, but I'm talking about, it's hard to find them a private house. Right, but the second.
They're all over.
But second, they, they, one of the problems in New York State is, COVID, so rehabs went to half capacity, right? Some nursing homes went to half capacity. There was all these random rules that were made up that reduced these people's capacity. Some of them survived and some of them didn't. The fact of the matter is, around New York State, a bunch of the rehabilitation facilities and homeless shelters closed out. And now we physically have less beds available to these people than we used to have.
Right. So there just aren't enough right now. So like, like I said last week, on any given night, even in the warmest part of the summer, I'll call, um, DSS and I'll say, I've got like three people here, they have no place to stay tonight. Well, they'll say, the rescue mission drop-in center is almost always full, because they do a good job, they're, they're always full. And then, almost all the hotels are always full. And so, then they'll say, well, do they wanna go to a hotel in Rome? But I just saw there was a shooting at a hotel in Rome last, last night anyway. But anyway, a lot of people don't wanna go to Rome because they have all of their stuff here, you know, or their, they have their appointments and everything. So, there just isn't any place for them, is one of, is one of the big issues. And so, DSS is really, they're really, like, they're doing their best. Um, but they don't, you know, they don't have any other places either. And getting hotels, there's only like two hotels that will take them, sometimes three. Um, and those hotels are, you know, if you, they get burned a few times, and then they're like, no, you can't send anymore either, anyway. So, that's what, I mean, it's, it's a capacity issue right now, and we have to build more capacity. But, um, that's, as you said, that's a Band-Aid.
COVID trained the capacity, allowing them to make it.
Okay, that's the answer. Is, uh, wanna thank, are we all set? What, everybody, anybody got any other questions? Okay, so I, I wanna thank everybody for coming. And like I said, I think we had a very good conversation. And hopefully, we can, um, have another meeting down the road and work on, you know, the positives of both our legislations. And again, like Councilperson, uh, Close Mo Testa said, feel free to reach out and work together and try to get something done.
So, Joe, I see, I, I would you to.
I, I will probably.
Listen to an actual.
No, I'll probably dismiss that now, that we have Sam, and we can take any positive points and add it to that. Okay?
I was like, I just caught a stray. Oh, no, because it's, talking about the radio and then, and then, didn't have the, like, I didn't.